And seven oh five AM, this is a village council work session. We have Mayor Sutter here, Councilperson Price, Councilperson Martin, Councilperson Grant.
Grant.
We have our village plan editor Eric Fisher, we have our council Jesse Schamp and myself, Councilperson Cameron. Uh, Councilperson Passion is out tonight and we are trying to find out about data. Okay, Councilperson. Alright, do we want to start with, I know we have a couple of things that were brought to my attention that we wanted to discuss tonight, so should we start then?
Go for it.
Alright, so, uh, one other thing, after having gone through all this with the thing on fireworks, um, the question came up, do we need to close some loopholes, uh, within the village right now? To, uh...
Do it.
Until we can, until we can have further discussions. I think one of them has to do with marijuana. It's not saying, it is not saying we can't have a dispensary, it's just saying, let's put something on the books until we can decide what we want to do. And that's what, it seems to be the trend of other municipalities right now, let's just say no, and then we can discuss it and have some time to talk through what we're wanting to do here.
Not specifically to that store type, I mean, I'm maybe asking Jesse if you know of any, or Eric, uh, is there any type of, because I thought about this with like the fireworks store, is it possible to set up restrictions but a business is like, hey, I'd really love to be here, but is there a way to get in?
Can we make it like a special permit use?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what a lot, yes, that's, Grist City did that two weeks ago.
Because you're only gonna get...
You can restrict, but you can still allow if you even butt with that, I don't...
There's some extra negotiation with that, I think, we can, kind of like a special conditional use.
Yes.
We can, we can find a way to do it that way. I will tell you, under the current regs, you're only gonna get one, if you get that.
Yes.
Because they have to be within a mile.
I have good news. On Tuesday, the state, and I will dig this out, we can continue the discussion, but, uh, the state issued a guidance that Franklin County will get no more cannabis adult recreational use permits, so there's nothing in, now you're not getting it.
But now, if one of them closed, would that be another one?
Potentially, just like liquor, they control what they want to issue out, so they're, they're gonna let the market settle itself, because it's really, it's really a wild west to some degree.
Do we even have a place, and, and again, I know that we, the whole point to this is covering our ass, and yes, I just said that all this time.
The answer, the answer is maybe barely, right?
Yeah.
Because, because the problem is, the problem is, they can't be within, oh, I was on the car.
Yeah, is there a place in the village you could technically even put one?
They could be over, they could be over roughly where the car, uh, place on the going corner, they've gotta be, it's close, it's still, I haven't directly measured it, but they can't be within 500 feet, I think, of the school.
Yep.
And so, that's, that's one tricky item that they've gotta contend with. The only other way someone would do it is, and, and, and again, this is just something for an economic incentive, is that you have the ability to annex upstate route three, and so, that would put things away from, you know, if you had a guy coming in across the street, you know, they brought the marathon along with them as an example, or across on the other side of, there's three properties on the other side of the, um, township properties, on the side of the...
What's he, over?
Cargo place, uh, the, um, storage place, sorry, and those can be annexed in as well, so there's, you, there's some ability to do it, it probably behooves us to put some type of extra extraordinary conditions, because I, again, I don't take it that the village is honestly against it, but you can, again, negotiate some better terms of, especially given the fact that they are, um, they're heavy cash industry and you can definitely, I think the village should be more interested in that profits of the headquarters of it versus just employee, you know, income tax, because there's a lot of money.
Just the ability to say no based upon community feedback.
Yeah, please, can you say no, I'll be, I'd like saying no, I don't have that option.
I, I, I know you like to say no, but remember that this is one of those things that we can put in the future, um, again, something to bring up for discussion, because it should go in the budget next year, definitely a question for the questionnaire, do you have an issue with marijuana use and see what it comes back with, and then you can make a very informed decision from that data point.
Yeah, but it only takes 30 people to have the situation they had last time.
Yeah, they don't have an issue with it until it happens, then they have an issue.
But that's the reason, but, but again, again, council folks, there's always gonna be a few with pitchforks, over a couple thousand people, right, and that's, that's your job to sit on the dais and make that determination, all I'm saying is a data point somewhere to get, where you pull a significant sample, and if the significant sample says 60% yes, you can base it on that and, and have that data behind you when you make your decision, if it ever comes to that. So, the answer, the, the long round way is that yes, Jesse and I can come up with something language wise, it gives you a bit more authority, um, you know, to say yes or no, or no.
Can we put that in our zoning code?
Yes, we would put it in that, we could put it in the districts, I mean, we'd have to just look at it a little more in detail, because really, it, it's tricky for them to, I was on a call with a group some months back, trying to find a spot, and they, they'd already had a, a, a program that was looking, you know, we were going over parcels, potential parcels, they were having a hard time, because it basically, they already had the mosque marked out, they already had the schools marked out, the big, the big question with the state is, for a while from their guidance, daycares were counting along with schools, and since you've got daycares are a dime a dozen along Cleveland Avenue on our side and the other side, really, there's nowhere for them to go at the moment.
Okay, but here's the problem, they changed the rules on us and then we...
Right, I'm not saying...
It's a moot point to me because...
If we rewind to what I said, we can come up with language for the special permit.
Right, so why are we talking about it?
Because information's important for the council.
Yeah, no, I think that's been enough, um, what about, like, um, is the storage facility, is that too close to the school?
The storage facility itself would be too close to the school, they, they, they boundary the school directly, so you're not gonna have that turn into that, I mean, as, as we discussed during the zoning change, oh, I mean, it's, it's, it's direct contiguous, there's a zero, it's parcel line to parcel line.
But is it, is it, the parcels can't be next to each other for the building?
The parcel, parcel line to parcel line at the moment, has to be 500 feet, that's how, that's how the rules are.
Yeah, it's not the wall.
It's not, it's not door to door.
So it's not like the, it's not like the 60 feet from the...
No, that is, that's a fire marshal's thing, that's not, yeah, that's a safety use zone.
Okay.
It's good knowledge that I was worried about the goalposts.
Sometimes, but you can set, you can set the goalposts.
It's a possibility where the auto dealership is?
Yes, I, I, I'll get you a few more, or, or some of the annexatable properties that are surrounding the village on that side of town.
Kind of like, so, nobody can, going back to this 1989, how it was written, um, how you say this, council, I guess, in other words, gets to decide from this point on, do these to be around in the park commercial in the future, um, yes, do you have that?
Well, just from, just from a special permit standpoint, we, we, you have some kind of unique conditions with a dispensary that I think you can, you will pass muster, like Jesse, supposed to also regulated.
That's really those, where we got into a bind with fireworks store was that we couldn't really articulate a defensible reason that they were any different or more dangerous than normal retail, I think you very likely could with marijuana.
Right, because it's federally regulated.
I just don't wanna deal with the work of doing all that, so it's just...
I was just thinking like, this is just kind of, you know, if you technically want medical whatever this other place is, then come on, we should go, before the park goes, kinda keep the park clean, I guess.
It's not that, my argument, and you're absolutely right with that, it's, we're a volunteer government with one full-time employee, we can't handle the responsibility, that doesn't mean we don't like it, or we have some sort of social, moral, political stance against it, we are only doing things that we can handle, because otherwise, we get ourselves in a bind, and that is basically what I'm trying to do.
Well, it's also a conversion of the same.
Fine.
Yeah, fine, but they, but they have that, they have more teeth in to say no or yes, I guess, in a lot of times.
So you can't, you can't say no to all the things, the uses you allow, it doesn't, doesn't work that way from a zoning standpoint, you have permitted, non-permitted, you know, those kinds of prohibited uses, as Jesse's explained, you start from your, if you really wanna get extensive and restrictive, then you just have a crap load of prohibited uses, and a lot of places do it with, um, sector codes, you know, essentially, the industrial code system, that's a, that's a whole different rigmarole, what I'm saying is that, in this particular instance, we can definitively guide you with some special permit language, so that you can say no on some very specific grounds, without too much trouble.
Do you just want, for now, none?
You say prohibited.
Prohib, for now, on a moratorium, and we'll just extend it as needed, we'll make it 120 days, whatever, we can extend it 120, and, and like I said, for, at least, the, quite a while into the future, they aren't going to issue any more in Franklin County, so we're safe, so this will just keep us...
Keep us, keep us safe.
Yeah.
But the same thing you presented with fireworks store.
Uh, no, no, it's a, that was different, fireworks stores are regulated that way.
We weren't talking about the sale of fireworks.
Oh, right, that's right.
And with the strip mall, you know, taking over, USA fireworks right next door, and then they have the same problem.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so yeah, should we just, should we now make fireworks a prohibited?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can absolutely, yeah, go ahead.
Can I do that?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, because now what's moved and what's keeping someone else from, you know, why couldn't they buy?
Well, you know, and I, I will simply say...
Couple things, I mean, you're, you're not wrong, in, in theory, they could, uh, Phantom's main hook was that they got in here before we switched our code, that was sort of what had me up at night, was, alright, maybe we even could get an argument about traffic and all that on the record, and win it, maybe, but where we're gonna lose is, they submitted all their stuff when it was definitively allowed, and now it's not, but you're absolutely right, I mean, as, it, it's kind of academic, I doubt there will be something like that to happen, but it can't hurt to do it.
Yeah, just say no, make them illegal, non-conformal use.
Yeah, yeah.
A retail fireworks store near across mine before, so it's kind of...
Well, let's, like, let's brainstorm all these other businesses we can't handle.
When we say can't handle, what, expound in that format, because it's not, I don't think that's what the issue is.
I don't think you can't handle, I think that's not on the background.
Right. If you, if you have specific uses you dislike, and then, and you list them out, and then I think we can have a reasonable discussion with the members of council.
I'm saying something, no, I'm saying like, a liquor store that requires a special license and may require additional calls or releasing...
A liquor, that's a fair thought.
Things we can't handle, other additional calls to the village, additional things that are a little bit more maintenance in that regard, those are the businesses that I'm addressing at this point.
So liquor stores are straight use, right now?
So...
Which means what?
Which means you can get a permit and they go in whichever the place that goes, as long as the state has approved them.
So it's, it's state regulated, it's not...
That is state regulated, but, but in our code, liquor stores are one of the 10 items that you have called out, so...
To be permitted.
To be permitted, so...
So, maybe we don't do that, but now in Minerva Park, it's technically not allowed, because we've still not put it on the ballot where we can even have alcohol sales.
You are correct, you are correct, so, but that, but that would be a true, that would be a true test of, of, you know, they would make their, they would make their permit or they would come in under contract with whatever they wanna go, they have to go and get the vote done with, um, whichever part of the year that is, and then you know that they, the village people are okay, because they voted for it at that point.
The village would have to, we already know that, the village would have to vote for that to even be an acceptable, unless they...
For the state to allow it.
Right.
Yeah, unless they set up in a residential, which then they're not permitted under our code, so that, you know...
And places like that can set up a convenience store to, to get their beer, well, they can get beer in wine here, that's right, I mean, nothing, zero, I keep forgetting that, so...
Yeah, there's dry.
This is a usual situation here with the dry.
That has nothing to do with that, she can't put...
Right, so someone, so that, so that one's controlled until at some point someone passes something, right.
So what about things like trick cashing, pawn shops, things like that?
Um, they are not in your code, they are conditional uses at this point in time.
Personal service, could they be down in there?
Oh, no.
Yeah, they're conditional.
How about tobacco?
Uh, also conditional.
That's a big contentious thing that I don't wanna play into.
It's conditional, yeah, you don't, you don't have something that calls out a, a tobacco store.
Okay, but here's, like, with all these lawsuits in the Supreme Court about flavored tobacco, should we just flat out say something so then we don't have to fight anything out in court?
Again, you can prohibit it, so it all depends if folks here wanna put a list together, they wanna prohibit things, and we add it to the zoning code along with the, along with the marijuana.
Like a games of skill location, have you ever seen that?
Yeah.
There's one within half a mile here.
Yeah.
Great net profits.
There used to be about a mile up here.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, uh, not here.
It's a, it's essentially, you can cash out, I give it to them, I will tell you exactly, yeah, it's, it's essentially, it's a, it's a computer gaming system that you can win lots of money, and I won thousands of dollars in them, and I used to go to them, and they were within, there were, there was one, I used to go to the one on the square, there was one in the square, there was one in the whole Butler Building, which is not extremely close, there's one in North Flats right now, they're there for a long time, okay.
That's one case I haven't, I haven't wanted to do.
But it's not considered illegal, he's a...
They are, I...
Gambling's heavily regulated by the state.
I think the skill, I, I'm almost certain the state, like, prohibited the games of skill.
They shut a lot of them down, they still operate.
Right, random, random games are okay.
At least it was a few months ago.
So, I, 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 tell my wife I love her. So we, uh, we, adding to the list, there was...
Right, right, so what I would say is that, what I would say is that, from a larger thought process for council is, yes, if there's specific items that council feels are not appropriate for the village, then we simply prohibit them, so put a list together, people, and let's...
My feeling is that it's easier to take something off the list than it is to get it put back on.
We totally agree with that, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, liquor, I think, marijuana, I think tobacco, because that's just too...
Well, okay, my only, it's, that's not a problem, I guess it's just, we, we, you don't mean like a gas station that sells tobacco?
No, you mean primarily tobacco stores, the primary use.
A cigar shop.
Anything that can carry, gun stores, I don't, no guns, that's too many.
You can say no guns, too.
Anything that requires extra regulation.
Ammunition?
Should be, we can't, we don't have time, energy, or resources to extra regulate.
We said fireworks shops, right? Trick cashing, tricks, that's a short term.
Yeah, yeah.
What else did they have?
I think...
The lockstep clinic, that's a similar case, same day.
Correct.
I mean, you...
You could, yes, you could.
Because the reason is, they, they don't have that much space, and if they don't wanna take it up with the daycares, and that's perfectly legitimate, in my view, perfectly legitimate non-use, I mean, they, they're...
Yeah, I said that, but now it's like, why, why can't you?
So, yes, you could make that one, too.
Doesn't it require additional licensing?
It, it, we, we, yes, it can, um, under specific conditions, I, I know that some municipalities have tried to, it mostly has to do with the residential side of it, where people have little daycares, and people, and certain municipalities tried to make it mandatory, because there's a mandatory voluntary system, depending how many children you have, essentially, anyone out here in the commercial zone though, is gonna be a mandatory regulation and inspections.
Yeah, yes.
But you still don't need it as a use if you don't want it, because if you want something else to be in there, right, which...
But if you ban daycares, are you banning them in the residential as well?
It's just, you know, uh...
No, we'd go by zone.
We only, yeah, we'd do it in the commercial and the office district zone, that would be it.
Because we have something that currently has, so what would happen to him if he decided to...
No, those are the voluntary, you just don't touch the residential, and it's allowed in the residential zone.
We have one in our one show.
Well, that's fine, they just know.
No, no, they're, they're legal, non-conform, right, so they're, they're allowed.
And we put it in our code now, and they decide, somebody decides to buy it, we do that.
As long as the use continues, doesn't matter, it's the same use, a continuous use.
Yeah, and there's, and usually it's like a six month period.
Right.
You can shut it down, as long as they slip in between that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, and yeah, I think that's, we're just...
And if you don't...
But do you really not want gas stations, like, if that marathon under, across, across 161 gets annexed in, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't...
Well, we, we would, you would annex it under a specific district, and their existing zoning would apply until something sets, and schools would not be there to use.
So, so gas stations, I think the law is too close to a residential, we're getting delayed.
We took the, we took the, well, they took it out in the 89 code, because the place is a mechanic shop now, by the way, if you don't want that shop, I'm all fan of you not allowing that anymore either, because he's hard to deal with. He's, yeah, you, you have environmental concerns, and it would be nice to see that transform to something else, in fact, why don't we just make the whole commercial district a planned zone?
Well, that's...
We should just bite the bullet on that now.
Well, that's kind of my next first ideas, I didn't, I think we ought to come up with a whole list of things that we have to move along, I'd rather us come up with a plan of, how do we improve what we have?
Sure.
You know, what can we do to...
We still need to prohibit some uses, over the short term.
That will increase our liability and our lawyer fees, so Jesse, let's talk about those first.
Well, none of it will be your liability, it certainly will increase my fees.
Yeah, we love you, but we're on the...
Note on that, we'll be back, I'll be back with something on that, just kidding.
Yeah, things that keep you up at night, or will keep you up at night, just get rid of them, you know?
I, I understand, I, I certainly understand where you're sitting right now, coming off the maelstrom.
Yeah, we can all be the swing of pendulum.
Right.
What I'm saying, liquor stores, tobacco, gun stores, what else, marijuana, no fun.
Yeah, no fun.
Potentially be fun, strip clubs, cash.
Strip clubs are already heavily regulated, they can't go, I mean, I'm not sure where they can go, I think only...
What was the one up, was it their one up, Cleveland?
They, they wouldn't be able to be in any of the business processes, they would have to...
They're so close right now, if they don't have a legal license, they're not coming in.
No.
Well, that's right.
That's very true.
Okay.
And I get it, right?
I don't like that.
That could change some...
No, but it works.
I'm gonna have to see who the control is, I'm very concerned, I don't order them by, 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 like, just, we're, 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 we're friendly now, and we don't have anything on the books, again...
No, 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 it, it, we, we do actually have adult regulation stuff on the books, it is there.
How strong is it?
Very strong, based on the Supreme Court decisions, and it's very hard for them to locate within our little district, you have to provide 1% or 2% of your municipality, now, we really don't have anywhere for them to go, they're not going in residential zone, and the only place, the only place they can really go is the, is the old plain industrial zone over by the school, and so the issue is, then, again, we're distanced to schools, and they'll never get approved, and there's a reason not to deny them.
But here's my question, what is the harm of just saying, by the way, most of them...
You can't, you can't straight deny, you cannot straight deny a strip club, you have to have adult regulations that sat down a long time ago, the Supreme...
Yeah, that's longstanding, we have it, but it is like, it is functionally impossible, because the only place they could go by our zoning is now within 500 feet of a school, and they can never come in.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's as strong as can be, because that school isn't moving.
The schools have helped us out.
Yeah, that's helped a lot.
I mean, pawn shop? Here's, here's kind of, yeah, pawn shop, trick cashing place, I think all that's gonna fall behind.
And you don't have...
I think, so here's, here's what we, here's my thought here is that, you know, we have the thing, let's just say, let's say you put something together, we have it for the next council meeting, that's still just a first meeting at that point, we'd still have two meetings in September.
And another work session.
And another council work session, and we could even sort of get an add to it, so I think we have a place to start, because we have two council people that aren't here working on their voices, so, is that okay?
Sure.
Cool.
And then if we think of something else, we can discuss it.
Do you guys talk to me earlier?
To me, those are the big ones right now. Can we add some box and clinic to those? And then, and then we are saying, no, no other fireworks stores, right?
Right, yeah, I have it up.
Other fireworks for her village.
No, you don't want that, you want none, so if they go, if they flame out, haha, nobody else can come in. They won't flame out, though, because they have suppression system.
Big one.
It's high tech.
They will.
A lot of it will flame out.
So, are we gonna stop it?
I, I, I'm just trying to brainstorm them together, you know, I like to do that, so if anybody else has anything, they're like, oh, that is a bad Grand Palace cheese bar, and we're like, that, cheese, cheese.
I don't think it was time to get to that.
That's so great, so cheese, we're gonna say yes to cheese.
If we can get a fudge shop, I'm all about, fudge to cheese.
Starbucks, yes to caffeine, we have Starbucks in here.
I wish.
Tommy's not interested in that.
Can we circle back to, um, a topic that we talked about during, when we were talking about Airbnb's?
Okay.
We talked about, uh, hotel use tax or something like that, that they can be taxed, and we could get, the village could get a revenue off of that, like, I don't know that we ever...
Closed the loop on it.
We finished that conversation, and maybe, maybe we'll ask to do that, but...
Did we do anything with Airbnb's, I forgot, did we do anything with Airbnb's, I drafted it, right, did we adopt it, I'm, I'm like, blacked out, we get past it.
Okay, so, yeah, so, okay.
Well, yeah, those are subject to the hotel motel, we do have to, we have to, um...
But we have to put that on a, both as a tax, right?
We do, yeah, we have to adopt a, there's a, it's convoluted, but we can get like, we can get like 3%, yeah, okay.
Yeah, does, does that go right, it doesn't go right, it goes to the, goes to what, the structure, yeah, there's a... So, so, just like gas stations, right, same thing, fuel surcharge, whatever.
I can be a little bit higher.
I'll get, I'll get something together on that to make sure, because there's a lot of, it's really convoluted with the hotel motel tax, part of it goes to like a visitors' convention bureau, part of it goes to the county, and then maybe a remnant comes down here, but I'll get, I'll figure that out for us.
Except for the, the one thing goes to the county, do we set up our own visitors' bureau then to get the revenue from that?
You can.
Do we have to do that?
You might have to do that, to get the revenue.
We'll figure that out, that'll be a Jeff Will transition.
Yes. That's a good, yeah.
Don't get annoyed because the revenue's not verified.
Oh, yeah, it's a singular maybe here.
That's possible.
3% off.
Yeah, you never know, we put, instead of the Washington Jigger Hotel, I don't know.
That's true, that's true.
It's just, it's on the books, so...
Yeah, that's right.
So Jesse, does the, does the, um, maybe I'm not calling this right, but where you have a facility, would that get that tax?
No, yeah, that one is not, yeah.
This is not, that is not a, that is not a for, a bed for letting situation.
Yeah, yeah, we looked at that for number one, and...
That's a medical issue, I would say.
Yeah.
It would have a long time ago, because it was housing people, and there was no medical stuff going on in the building for almost a year, but it is now a medical facility, they were just living there.
I also, I, so that's, I mean, kids would be like, no, just, real nursing facilities.
Right, right, I mean...
Well, that would kind of screw you up for a lot of the things.
It's, yeah, I guess, it's a legal matter, sure, as a practical matter, there's something, As a practical matter, there's something, how do you, what you don't want to do is target a disadvantaged group or a, a, a protected class, which
Unfortunately, you get into.
routinely expands, including drug addicts and that type of thing, it's only, you.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very hard to do that. And then the other question after that is, if you ban that use or you ban all nursing homes, the owner of that facility is gonna be like, well, this is a nursing home, built place, well, somebody uses this as a store, right?
Right, yeah, you just form a taking, it's a no-no.
Yeah, so that's, what we need.
So let's, so access.
We, we, we've already changed the, the wording on that specifically in that office district.
That's right, that's right. We, we, we already did that in the, we, I don't know what district was that, to run office.
Yeah, we, we.
So we, so from that, to having that conversation on, because there's a, there's a interesting between the, to improve the commercial spaces within our
Yeah.
community.
So.
Like, like, the appearances, um.
So the short, the short, the short answer is yes, the long answer is a bit more difficult, right?
Is it difficult or it just takes time?
It, it takes time. The idea behind redevelopment, because really it has to get to incentives for redevelopment.
Yeah.
Which is possible, right? So, we've already had, as, as a matter of course, the council understands that the one strip center in between the other two, the middle one, is owned by the Andersons, okay? So the Andersons are a very wealthy group, sold a lot of stuff out to Intel, have the Anderson stores and things like that. The elderly mother of this group is, owns just a lot. We, myself and John had a nice meeting with him, uh, with the son out there. Um, had a very nice conversation. That's the kind of individual, that, because we, we, you know, I talked to him and I put it into his head, hey, what about buying Reston Block? Right? What about, this, because he's like, yeah, when she passes, we're gonna sell it. Well, wait a minute. I was like, how about an investment opportunity, right? So there, there's an ongoing discussion, you know, you never know how these things go. But what, what I was talking to Jesse about a minute ago is that obviously, for redevelopment, we would make that a planned district. You know, let's just say we get everything from the one strip center to the other one in, and we bring forward a plan, the developer brings forward a plan. You know, we got nice mixed-use development, where however it's handled, where you may have parking you need, you may have, you know, those nice shops you see, new, and you have a couple layers, a couple floors of maybe apartments, or maybe a medical officer, could be any number of things, right? We could have, it's, it's a mixed-use development. That's the way that kind of thing would happen. To do that, we would, we would just need to encourage it in some form, right? I mean, the council, obviously, I, I believe here would be, um, very positively received if, if we brought you some type of proposal for a developer like that, because that would eliminate a lot of, those are older structures, you know, they were built in the sixties.
That's the problem. The people that, who own a certain story that's been there forever are not gonna do a damn thing about it. So you have to find a way to prod somebody to buy them out, and then you say, okay.
Right.
We'll go along with this, and here is the zoning text that has exactly what we want, up to and including design details.
Right, and so, i- it, it's one of those things to where, keep in mind, in order to buy those folks out, a developer who puts, you know, whatever that cost of that multiple strip, you may own the one, as an example, he's gotta buy the two houses, the other one in between.
Right.
Gotta make it, he's gotta get density in order to redevelop, because he's gotta go get a loan, he's gotta have stuff, he's gotta have some synergy to make things happen, so. So there will be some request, if you ever see a redevelopment plan for a several-story mixed-use structure. It's just the only way to make the, the numbers at the end of the day work, right?
So, that's what that looks like, when.
So, if, if you go, if you go down to Fifth Avenue, right, off campus, off of, uh, Long Tansy River Road right there, and you go eastbound, you see some of the larger structures now, Franklinton's got some of them. Columbus down to Mission Corridors is trying, is trying to do the same thing with its rezoning itself, because they're trying to solve multiple birds of one stone. They're trying to provide more housing, which will, you know, overall brings the cost of housing for the whole area down, you know, and also provides a complete, you know, refresh of those particular corridors.
But you wanna know what they had to give up, what, what was the incentive?
The.
Yeah, what, kind of, what's the incentive?
We don't, we don't have to give any other, you know, incentive, other than granting them a density that meets their needs. That's what you have to keep in mind.
Right, they're gonna have to make an ask that says, in this development text.
So, so they're gonna say, we put retail on the bottom and parks on top.
As an example, as an example, yes.
And when, and then we say, yeah, sort of.
Right, and, and, and there're gonna be some back and forth with, I'm sure how the aesthetics, because you're gonna, it's one of the things that when that happens, there'll be an opportunity for you to kind of say, okay, this is going to be the change of the corridor we've been looking for. Let's talk about the materials, let's talk about the look from the street. But you have the opportunity to do all of that at that same, same time.
And I, I think that's where we need to go. I think we need to start looking forward a little bit and saying, hey, this is where we wanna see, you know, what product, you know, twenty, thirty years from now, and start putting something on top of this. I think the same thing has to do with that service road, you know, we have Inkskeep, right?
Right.
The blind property next to it.
Right.
What's keeping, you know, we, a developer from, I know we're here.
Well, because the Inkskeep folks are still working their store, not ready to sell yet, right? That's what's keeping that from happening.
Yeah, but I think, I think anyone, if you give them the right incentive to sell their business.
Well, the incentive is a check, right? The incentive is you need someone to come and say, hey, you know, I, I'm interested in both these properties, I'm a buyer, what's that number? And then they would have concurrent conversations with us and say, what can I do here? Because that, that's inevitably before they, before they get into contract, they're gonna contact us and say, what can I do? Yeah.
But I think that's a, that's a nice spot.
Oh, I agree with you.
With the low, with the, you know, the high-density residential zoning with Columbus, I think that should change some things, that's gonna bring
Yeah.
more density to the area.
It, people, people will look for their opportunities, inevitably they will have it. Now, on, on one sixty-one, we did change that zoning to a planned district already. So someone will come and say, what can you do? And then we'll start having that discussion.
So we are, we kind of are having.
We have that in place over there, right, right.
I think we changed it.
My concern with that side of putting in higher-density housing or what have you along Cleveland is, again, the traffic issue.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's.
I don't know, well, A, there's a service road, which I think helps with that trap quite a bit.
I'm sure the service road.
Yeah, over there.
Well, we, let's see, well.
There, there's already got fifty thousand vehicles a day.
Right.
And the thing is, if you wanna change that look, unless the village wants to buy it and wreck it and do what you wanna do with it, you're gonna have to, the only incentive is to make a profit for the folks that do it, and they need density to make a profit.
Why can't you mandate that their signs are more cohesive and up-to-date and?
So, so you can. When you say up-to-date, when we say up-to-date, so, so let's, let's talk about that. We can, we can have, we have a maintenance code to regulate the way those buildings look. We can, we can certainly, and I talked to John about it, we can certainly start bringing the hammer down on certain people. But those buildings already were approved as they were, and they were permitted, well, hold on, but that's very important that we, you cannot go, you cannot go after the fact on a, on a permanent structure that's approved through the permanent development plan and say, hey, by the way, you know what, we don't like shitty box signs, as an example. So you know what, we want you to do this, and that's gonna add a thirty thousand dollar cost to what you wanna do. You can't do that, that's not, that's not legal. So, but I just wanna make it clear that we can't, we cannot make them change the, what's already approved, okay?
I'm not saying, well, what I'm saying is, is the signs should all be, can we mandate that if they update their signs, they should all be one cohesive color, one font, or whatever, one sixty-one. It's the same strip mall that's built on one sixty-one in Worthington, it's literally the same look, but it's painted the same color, and all the signs are the same. And it looks so much better.
Well, I think about my store on Main, on Main for Mirrorfield, right? They can't have an illuminated sign up front, they literally have a wooden sign that says, but it's office on it, you know, and not hold the bell on it.
Yeah, that's the reason.
We tell the community that's the same way. Now, I get, I understand where you're coming from, in that, we can't say, y'all have to go out and change it now.
Right, right.
It's only a change as they apply to update their signs.
Right, o- only if they cha, well, more importantly, only if they change the facade. They come to us and say, we're going to change the facade, then you, the code, you can't do anything to make them change what was already approved and allowed under the code. You can say, you can change parts of your sign code, which we have gone through and done already, where you have a certain amount of fonts, you have a certain amount of colors, and you have a regulation concerning that fit in those boxes.
Right.
But they're allowed per the, per the development plan for each of those permanent buildings to work within what's already been approved.
Very simply, though, we can say, hey, just blue and white, here's the font type.
And that's not.
And if we change the sign, then they would be required to change.
I, I will tell you, in, in, in light of not wanting to give Jesse more work, changing your sign code or, or trying to do stuff like that is the easiest way to give the attorney a lot more work. I'll let you go.
No, it is. I mean, you, it's, it, they can replace what they have there with, with exactly what they have. So it's like, i- if their existing sign gets old and, and it breaks, that isn't when we can say, oh, broken, and you need to fix it, and here's how you need to fix it. They get to do exactly what they had in perpetuity.
Yeah, if a new person loses that space and the box is still there and you're just replacing the insert, we have no control.
That's right, that's right. Now, none of it, it, none of it hurts to get what you want on the books. It just takes time.
I mean, I think that's, I think that's a nice thought, but I think that limits us to what's currently there.
Right.
And I think we could look even further and say, let's talk about what this area looks like when these buildings are gone, when something else has been, has been replaced, and encourage people to even do that. There's a huge initiative right now to, from Northland Community, uh, what is it, they seem to redo one sixty-one, right? Well, I know that that intersection at one sixty-one in Cleveland is a major area for the travel redevelopment and stuff. It naturally leads into the rest of Cleveland Avenue near there.
So, do they have, do they have any, um, and, and it's an interesting question, because Minerva Park may wanna go one way or the other, but if you wanna match along with their guidelines, you can do that. Or you can put some things on the books just to kind of match it, so that we continue that particular theme, if you want that kind of look. If you want something more unique, you have the opportunity when a redevelopment comes to dictate that. I would tell you, if you really wanna, if you really wanna encourage it, okay? Then there's something we can put on the books now, that's a planned district for these areas, similar to what, well, it's even, I didn't even say an overlay may work best. We have to talk about it, and we can do it either way. That way you keep some of the uses not yet, or you don't get in this problem of approving all of these non-conforming uses all the time. But an overlay district, similar to what Columbus did, may be what you wanna do along your two corridors, to say, hey, we want this, these uses, and you can encourage the specific uses you want there, you know? Um, and we are okay with X number of hype stories, uh, units, you know, you can probably put that on the books and still make it a planned kind of deal, to where developers will say, hey, oh, that looks pretty sweet. I can do a lot right here along the nerve park, and somebody will start to try to aggregate parcels, right?
I think what we have to think about as a council is that our village is not gonna grow much anymore. Like, we don't have parcels, you know, it's kind of parcels left to build off. And so the only way for us to get more income through taxes and, and things like that is to create that density within certain areas. And that space along one sixty-one, that's, I mean, uh, Cleveland Avenue is a perfect place to do it. Those buildings are pretty old, they're ready to, they're ready to be remodeled and replaced, and they, you know, they're, what, sixty years old?
Oh, yeah, at least.
Um, it's time for them to come down, and this is our opportunity to kind of say, hey, this could be something that brings us a little more.
I'm very nervous about that.
I don't think it's traffic.
Three months.
If you add, if you add, like, a five-story apartment building on that.
I mean, I think five is, is a little excessive.
I would say four is, just probably, we're looking at three to four is probably looking at. You're looking minimally if you wanna see a three to four.
Look, well, that's part of the development, they have to put in parking rooms.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's not, it's not just on your street, it's gonna be underneath, it's usually incorporated with a couple levels of parking underneath. You've got your level and stuff.
Traffic is gonna be Cleveland Avenue traffic, it's not gonna be Minerva Park traffic.
Right.
We're not responsible for policing that traffic, we're not responsible for maintaining those streets out there. We're just adding some density and upgrading the look.
Which you have every right to do.
On one of our, um, on the west side of the village. So, I understand what you're saying, but I don't see, I, I'm not completely seeing the downside to this.
It can make it harder to turn left on Jordan.
Well, you know what, I think there's some other development that fits in there, you know?
Well, you're, you're, you're further down than Jordan, where these two, you know, where the other, what we're talking about, I mean.
Sure, no, again, that's, that's kind of the argument against, oh, hey, we already have a traffic challenge, you know?
But then, but what, what happens is, over time, when, when these things appear, that's where, and we've already had the discussion with Columbus, there will be a major redo at some point of Cleveland Avenue corridor. There will, and all this will be taken into account, and Columbus will re-engineer it, and they will put new lights in, and they, because they, they'll have to, there's no choice, right? They have to adapt over time.
Right.
But those timeframes are ten, twenty, thirty-year periods, as things develop.
And, and I don't know that, that it'll develop or anything like that.
We don't, oh, yeah, we don't.
We don't know that, that's just.
I don't think you're wrong. I think at this point, I just wanna start with the stuff that we can do, and, uh, think, well, what if, what if somebody, I think at this point, we should at least make it look not dilapidated and make the signs not rundown and, um, on cardboard and all of those things that we haven't told.
Right.
So I think we should start.
Those are, those are enforcement issues with what's on the books, so we just.
I think that is something that I would wanna focus on, and say, hey, your site is low, can you replace it?
So maybe at the next work session, can we just kind of review what we've put on the books?
I'm sure.
And bring that to us, so that we can just look at it one more time. I know that, as we were doing the code relay, it was a lot of stuff.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
All at one time, and we didn't always have time to sit down and get dressed and everything.
Yeah, we can, we can get focused on a couple of those things. Maintenance code, which we didn't really change, because it was recent maintenance code, right? And we can go over sign code and we can.
So, would that work?
I think that's great, yeah, so, and you guys, do you know what area I'm talking about? It's like Lindworth, one sixty-one across from Suburban. And it's the same, it's like the same floor plan layout, strip mall, and it's the same roofs, they're all painted, I think, more green, and they look very nice. And all the signs are white, and it's very cohesive, but I live in that, like, initial floor plan that they're all blonzed up.
Those, those are new, those are new.
There's, I think, I'm pretty sure it was built on the same time, and ones, ours are not very well taken care of, and the other ones have, like, they're just painted the same color, and the signs are all, they look so much better.
They're, they're.
They're just activated.
Somebody looking for an investment in the community might go, hey, this could use some betterments. Just go look here. This is a terrible, terrible sign, we should buy this, because we can get the key.
Yeah.
Um, something else to think about with, with the property being redeveloped, um, is that when you build a new building, your price or rent per square foot goes a quite a bit, and the.
Significant, both the downstairs, you know, the mixed use, as well as the apartments.
And you're not getting, you're not getting the little mom and pop shops in there, you're getting more higher-end retail spaces.
They typically do it with pre, pre-arranged stuff with their network, and so they'll bring in, you may get a couple mom and pops that are really good. But nonetheless, they want the change, they want the people with the corporate backing, you know, who can pay those particular leases over time.
Starbucks, do you intend to buy that whole street?
I don't have trade or children's.
No, no, we don't, we don't have that square footage in retail space.
You're gonna get sixteen hundred square feet per, roughly speaking, in each one.
What is the two you want? Do we want?
Thirty-two hundred for a restaurant, maybe four.
Pure mom and pop.
You, you, you've got mom and pop now, what do you think?
I.
That's mom and pop.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Right.
I think it, it could be cute mom and pop.
Could be.
Yeah, but, but cute mom and pop have to be able to pay a certain lease levels, which generally is, it gets iffy.
The evolution of uptown western, over the last twenty years, you, you kind of, that's not necessarily mom and pop, but those start to become like middle-classy businesses, so.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Like, a couple million dollars, mom and pop, and just, we're gonna order the house, and put this thing together, so I wanna live my dream and resell the rooms.
How about, like, assets, like that kind of?
Here's the other thing that I think about, we could let Intel play, come in, we'll see.
That's maybe put into a hall?
And.
It may or may not.
It's too, it's not too big, it's available, it's too, yeah.
Too poor.
Too far around, too.
There's national security issues involved, that is not failing. They're putting money into it.
But I think that, I think that retail around here is gonna continue to grow, and those people that work there are gonna move into our community and to this area. So I think it helps us to have those type of businesses and whatnot, I think.
You, you also need to have, you also really need to be successful as a community to have the cycle of housing, you really do. You need to have some type of, you've got a lot of housing. You need some type of rental units or people to transition in and out, and you don't have to have, I'm not talking about cheap stuff, but again, when you build a multi-high-density, expensive environment, you've got rents that are twelve hundred to sixteen to seventeen hundred a month. Basically affording a house, people wanna get in there, because they want nice amenities, and then they look for a house, right?
My understanding is the new, uh, retail, um, apartments or condos that are being built on Westerville Road over here, right as you get into the city. I think those are ringing at like three thousand dollars a month.
They get up there.
And they're like one or two bedrooms, they're not even big.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're outrageous, almost.
I paid, I paid twenty-three fifty plus a hundred dollars for two apartments spaces for two beds, two closets.
There you go.
Yeah.
You can rent Westerville, you can rent apartments in Westerville for about fifteen to seventeen hundred.
They can, right, but I'm saying these new ones.
Singles.
The new ones are insane.
They're outrageous, and they're gonna, like, you know, too new, there would be, there's not gonna be any vacancies on them.
No, not when, not when there's new product, and not when there's such a demand for housing as it is, so.
It's just gonna get worse.
It is.
So I think those, I'm not gonna say short-term, but those month-to-month type places, apartment buildings, things like that, would do well, maybe, and we don't have that.
So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of positives.
Here's, here's what I don't, I don't wanna take that road and make it apartment buildings home. I think it's gonna have to say, that has to say retailers well.
Yeah.
But I think that mixed use, the retail on the bottom, the apartments on the top.
Or offices, there can be, there can be medical users, too.
Offices are choice.
You can do, you can, it depends on the user, and if you go to Polaris as an example, you can find plenty of examples where you've got, um, mixed use right there on Lyra and Gemini, and you've got, you've got a combination. So, it works, either way.
So, at the end of the day.
Where do I put the people who park?
Underneath.
That's where you put parking garages, and that, there's structures that get put in there, and they can be timed, so you can't see it from the street.
They can be underneath, talk about the density.
And that's what the developer pays for, and that's where we say, hey, you know what, I can't see these cars, approve, you know, do it.
Right.
Well, the amount of money that we're probably bringing in from most of those strip malls compared to income tax from renter or people that are living here, I promise you, is probably tenfold. Because I highly doubt we're bringing very much in from any one of those strip malls.
Yeah, yeah, right, we're not, yeah, there's hardly any workers.
Okay, but here's the other question.
Well, the problem with a lot of those are, they're here today, gone tomorrow. And by the time Rita finds them, they're all gone. I know of several that they weren't even there long enough for Rita to find them. I mean, three, six months.
Right.
Rita's, it's taken them four years to find something.
We're not helping the community by having that turnover in the retail spaces.
But we don't control it.
Right, we don't.
We do not control it.
It's hard to establish to make it a better.
Uh, well, let me ask you a question. When was the last time you went to one of those retail stores?
Never.
I have never stepped foot in any one of them. I did twenty years ago, I would step foot in almost all of them. Now, I, there is not one thing that I would go to specifically walk in there.
Lock the area western.
We don't control, and that's not being judgy or anything, I don't be asking, I don't go to, I don't go to any of them, the only place I've ever gone into is.
And he sells, and he sells like mixed three batches.
That's what we have to serve.
It's good stuff, yeah, we got.
I mean, I think it's important, I know we keep talking about retail, so I'm trying to think about all the things that I don't want. But I don't want, I would like to see something that people are gonna use.
That's what I'm thinking, that is, this.
The nice way you say it.
Let's not, let's just not focus on what we don't want, let's also focus on the future and what we do want down the road.
Right, because that's not working for us. There's nothing out there that is working for us.
Oh, this one.
So, we can just, we can put in all the regulations we want, right, but I think we still have to.
Yeah, I agree.
Just, you have any rest?
Prohibiting, prohibiting things that are gonna make a really money. Probably many of these things that are going to make a lot of money has to at least be looked at. I'm not saying that we have to do it. And a lot of those places can't go in. I mean, again, I don't, but there's plenty of them.
I don't like the coffee shop. I think the coffee shop, we need people to wait for that, not the, yeah, yeah.
We have to help people.
And then we should have shorter things and go, hey, how do we make this look a little bit better during the transition? But also set the stage for ten, fifteen years now where the zoning changes at Columbus Square goes away and it's all apartment buildings and then you're just like, okay, it has.
Then we'll be like, when do we need more of that? I want to say this. I feel like, okay, guys, so the most amount, the largest amount of our revenue comes from property values. And I think there's a lot of luxury in low-density things.
You mean, you mean our income tax?
Our income tax.
Comes from, it's not property.
It's on the dollar.
Yeah, we don't get property tax.
Property values. We bring in like six hundred thousand dollars.
It's more about the income to maintain the properties, income tax.
Okay, but if you have a higher-end property, you probably make more money to be able to afford that. So that's one way to look at it. But I think there's a lot of luxury that comes from, and I think it would increase the value of the type of person that lives here in having a low-density housing in, in area within close proximity to everything else. And I think you can discredit that.
Do, do we have another golf course annexes? Am I missing something?
I know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, we're, we're, not to be too facetious, but just where are we? The, the issue is that we can't start from scratch anywhere because everything's built unless, unless you rezone. The funny thing is, you know, it's one of those things to where you, you would almost have to fill in the lake and sell some, some special lots. I'm, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, there, there's nowhere else, there's nowhere else to, to do a low-density environment and build these houses.
I'm saying this is a low-density environment or maybe we should keep it that way.
It's not going anywhere unless you change the zoning and you start wrecking houses to put up density.
What I'm saying is maybe we shouldn't add those apartment buildings on the front.
That's a council's decision to make when the time comes. We do not have anything on the books right now that.
There's nothing here.
Right, I just think that sometimes there's a lot of luxury in not having apartments around.
It's, I, I guess I'd love to say that. Like, if you put in the right apartment, you know? Because I, you know, if I was a builder coming in here, I'm not building a low-income apartment. I'm going to put the Rita in the same as you.
It's too, it's too expensive. It's too expensive to, to, to develop section eight apartments as an example. You can't do it without government subsidies. Columbus passed some very large bonds this last go-round because they need that within their environment. You don't need that. You can totally hold out with higher-density regulations and they are forced to rent them at a certain number because you can't, you can't suddenly make, spend tens of millions of dollars and rent things for eight hundred dollars a month. It doesn't work that way. It's a loser.
We're getting into that, we're getting into those generations that can't get the down payment on the house. And they're going to spend just as much on renting a place that we do our mortgages. And they, they want to live in these cute communities like Oregon.
Right.
And I think that gives them that.
Two cities schools.
Yeah, they're going to Minerva Park.
Is there a room to enjoy right now?
I mean, we don't have tons and tons of room.
Well, it's not, it's not a problem that we have to solve.
No, you got, you got a very limited amount to work with.
Yeah, let's focus on the stuff that we need to focus on instead of saying, well, maybe in ten years somebody's going to.
Just setting the stage for potential opportunity. That's all we're really trying to do.
Right, and let's just make sure it doesn't go down that, that path.
That's kind of what, that's what a redevelopment is all about is about not going to be a bad house.
But I think that's already there. I think we're trying to, yeah, and you know, again, not trying to be a jerk, but.
No, no, you, you have an old fire.
I used to use many things. I mean, my parents used to come over here, like, I know so many people that used to go to the tanning salon, go to the hair salons, go to them, you know? All of the, and it wasn't just that. There were, every single one of those were occupied, every single one of those, the parking lots were full and now.
You're a product of time.
I couldn't even begin to tell you what businesses are in most of it.
Just don't agree Marshall.
West Coast video.
Right. You have, yeah, no, you have, you have plenty of opportunity right there and along one sixty-one all the way, I think, through the funeral home, quite frankly, to be able to redevelop it. Because that funeral home eventually will be done and there'll be opportunity to redevelop the whole, whole quadrant right there. And that, those are big, much bigger lots than what you've got over here.
Yeah. So we, I mean, I'd like to continue this discussion and try to see what we can do and kind of put some stuff on.
All right.
Cool. Um, do we need to run through real quick the, the genders or, I'm not, there's no problem, there can only be four council members.
Nope, it could be four.
Because Catherine, I have a lot of it by her address. Um, let me get to my, I don't know, do we have?
I don't think there's much of anything. It's, it's just rereading. Oh, I think Jeff said there was one supplemental appropriation, but he, he hasn't said anything about it.
Um.
Jeff always with the supplement.
Always.
He's never talking about bringing money back and then they're like, oh, I.
Silver supplement. Um.
Top of the box.
Are you, what are your thoughts?
I'm not sure much of it, but.
Depends if it will go another hour, it will be five minutes.
So, I've heard concerns from staff that we have, the pendulum has swung the opposite direction with our POs and whatnot.
Okay, what are we talking about?
We're getting, it's very difficult for people to do their job right now.
Well, that's interesting. That's funny. I, I would say, look, from, from my perspective.
Yeah, you get, you get in more trouble than anybody here.
But, but, but it's, it's, it's okay. I have a good working relationship with Jeffrey, right? He's a good guy. He's, he's stringent about how he does his job because he's a third-year auditor. So I will say, I, but it has plenty of, of, of financial folks at different municipalities over the years. He's one of my favorites to work with, quite frankly. Um, he listens to reason and stuff like that and, and you just, you just have to kind of explain things. So he's, he's, as he should be, hawk-eyeing your, uh, money for the village because you don't have a ton of it, right?
Right.
And it's just what the way it is. Um, he's got some rules and regulations. I mean, you know, and I think if there's anything of concern to you, I would simply encourage you to sit down and go over specific. It's a small group, so I, I know we're, we're on the record here that I would say, no, no names or no intinuations, but just say, tell me your process. And maybe get some more details from some, someone who's approached you specifically to understand what the issue is. I, I don't have an issue with the man. It's just, he's just, he has a process.
Yeah, I get it. I think where we're coming into some issues, from what I'm hearing is, let's just say, an emergency arises over the weekend and there's no credit card, right? And we have to go through this whole process of getting one to get, you know, how do you, I would make, I would like to make sure that the village can do what it needs to do when we need to do it. And still maintain that sense of, um, control over the finances. Um, just trying to see if there's a.
Yeah, I don't know if it, if it's something as simple as, this is very much outside my expertise. It'd be a Jeff question, but it's like, is there, rather than a credit card. Is there a ten thousand dollar prepaid debit card that you can appropriate money to that is for a designated emergency fund? And that way it's not a credit and then Jeff has to go pay it and he's, you know, and I, he, he's obsessed and he's told me, he's obsessed with the then and now. And, and he doesn't like that. They hate it and I get it. But if you appropriate the money and it's sitting there on a card, that is not then and now. It's, it was then. It's done.
And, and council will be the ones that make that appropriation. You at the end of the day are the ultimate authority in that, you know, designating what it's used for. So that's the next one.
I think maybe that is the, I think maybe that is the answer.
I think one of the, one of the things that, and I am, am in agreement with that. So we already had a situation that we had somebody that wasn't here that day, um, and they needed a partner.
Sure.
And nobody has.
Right.
So, wrongly, on her day off, Apple.
That's crazy. That's crazy, yeah.
And then he gets annoyed if someone spends their own money to go ask for a receipt. So, yeah, it's catch twenty-two.
So, but I, so we had, yeah, so we had a meeting in here a couple of weeks ago and it was basically Chief and Tammy and everybody and sitting down trying to, he has not put together the credit card policy, but essentially you have to sign it out, you have twenty-four hours to go do what you're doing, which I honestly cut my mouth shut through the whole meeting, but that's difficult for me. I, I have a busy schedule, so when I was going and getting stuff at the concession stand, I go get it when it's convenient. So, it took me three.